I'd like to call our regular public session order please and stand and join us in the class room. Ready, begin.
The United States of America and the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is not a report out of closed session this evening and I asked for a motion to adopt their agenda.
No.
Do you have any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
All the bigger recruitment is due in it.
Aye.
Opposed.
Can you guys unmute now?
Sorry. And our first item tonight on our agenda is the recognition recognition of high school teacher Jose Luis Gonzalez.
So as we, I think as we all know, and Sam probably could speak volumes to this about this man, but he reacted exactly the way that we would want all of our teachers and staff to react. He immediately took action, jumped to it, was was able to manage his classroom and get nine one one call, was able to form CPR. I know the first responders that are here today also were just so impressed with his quick actions that really made a difference. And he afterwards was just so concerned about his student and I could see it on his face and he was wearing it and I was so thankful that Odile was there to be there to help him too and process it and we were so happy when the results came back that here he is today. So with that, you want to say anything?
Thank you.
I believe it's gracias.
So Jan, do you have anything to add?
No, I just, you know, I think we all should feel that all of us who've had the training and we have really made an attempt to provide that for our staff in this district and to emphasize that. But when I've had that training over the years, the question always is, is what will you do when you're in that situation? So we could all only hope that we would react like you did and to jump right in there without giving it a thought and let that training take over because everyone isn't capable of doing that. So we are really in your debt for that.
Well, no, thank you. I, you know, I just feel like, you know, thank you for doing this for me. I really, you know, you know, I have like a, you know, it's, I think it's somebody else upstairs who really came over me and, you know, and I'm just happy that you made it back. And, you know, I, you know, I love what I do and I feel that it's still a huge responsibility beyond my wildest dreams. And, you know, I think that just weighs really heavy on me. And I just want you to know that, you know, anything that, you know, I can do for you, you know, and and for the kids in my classroom, the future and my colleagues, my friends, you know, to this district, thank you. And anything I can do to to improve the lives of that I, you know, that I've touched, you know, in this journey of my life and our journey is better somehow. Yes, I'm happy.
So there's two certificates. One's actually from the Orange County School Nurse Organization and they're presenting this to Jose Luis Gonzalez for his emergency heroics and provide CPR.
Thank you. Thank you.
And obviously, obviously, we, the board and myself, Jan and I both present you with this courageous act of heroism certificate. We are in your debt for doing the work that you do day in and day out and just so thankful that you're on our team. So thank you, appreciate you.
Thanks for all the support.
So thanks, Kelly, for being here.
Of course, of course.
Thank you so much.
And I do want to say thank you. I mean, you gave me my son back. Because everybody I spoke with, every doctor, every nurse, they said if it wasn't for you, he'd be dead.
Rain damage, dead.
So thank you.
Neither.
I'm so happy you're here. I really, you know, I, I just, I lost words of like, you know, I, the last time I saw you. It's, you know, but I'm so happy you're back and believe me, the next four years, you will learn Spanish. You'll learn Spanish. It's the journey of this life.
It's all about Spanish now.
You have to use.
You're fluent.
You know, honestly, you know, I will be there, you know, some, some, you know, and I will always keep this in mind, you know, so I hope it's good, you know.
So wait. Gracias.
Well, thank you, Tom Barber, for coming as well and joining us today. I know you're sitting in the back there. Thanks for coming.
Gracias.
Really appreciate you.
I believe Captain Andrew Hill is here. If you'd like to ask and say. You got your back, boys.
Good job. No, it's on behalf of the fire department. This is, days like this is what make our job so great and I can honestly say, been around for a while, that without his intervention, we wouldn't have Sam by any stretch. It wasn't us, it was him. And it takes teachers and people in the community to step in and and take action when most people wouldn't. And so it's a great, you're a great asset to not only the school but our community. And so we thank you and and I wholeheartedly believe I got the greatest hug from Sam's grandma. But I can say that was for you.
Thank you.
You deserve it. Thank you. You did a great job, so.
Everybody did, which is amazing.
We're just lucky that you were there that day for sure. Glad it was in Spanish class. Thank you. It's an honor to be with you.
Well, thank you all, those that came here and mom and grandparents. And I know that it's a special man that we want to be able to recognize and this is the least we can do. But I know that we always have a debt of gratitude from Sam for doing what he did. So and I, I as well, when I walked up and saw what you had done and and the actions of your students and how they were reacting to you, you can definitely sense they cared about you. They cared obviously about what's going on in the classroom. You saw the best of our students that day at that particular moment. So, so and our staff. So thank you and our, and our guys over there in blue who were here like that. And they were here and were really kind of surrounding and working with our students as well as our staff to make sure that everyone was feeling okay about moving forward and and kind of keeping us informed and managed for the work that she was doing, remaining in constant contact with the family, letting us know how things were going. We try not to overwhelm and inundate the family with the with information, but rely on one person to be that conduit. And it was great to hear and see that last email where I was. You woke up and started talking. I think you mentioned something to grandma at some point. So, so, but thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, everything else pale twice as serious. Obviously powerful and a bit overwhelming. Now we have a comment for items not on the agenda and I have two parts. And the first is Tanya Feliciano.
Hello, Kevin's with me. How to follow that? Anyway, I am here as an extremely proud parent and a proud member of this school district because we have a great thing to celebrate, the great success our Destination Imagination kids had at state tournament in Sacramento on April 1st. And I think you all have a handout. Okay, maybe not all of you, I think you need to share. But I'm going to kind of quickly skip over what Destination Imagination is because I think you know that and I'm trying to be quick. But I did want to emphasize the places where Destination Imagination and the priorities of LUSD are in sync. One is the interdisciplinary aspect of the program and the emphasis on STEAM where not just technology, but arts also matter. The second is the emphasis on creative problem solving where it's not just the efficacy of the solution, but the out of the box thinking that is valued. These are all things that the school district values as well, teamwork and leadership. The teams are self-led, the kids decide everything and the kids learn how and what they can lead, what they're good at. And finally, the self-reliance. Parents are not allowed to be involved in making ideas or making the props or making anything. This is all done by the students and I know self-reliance is especially something Mrs. Solberg talks about at times. So and then just to skip ahead to I guess the fifth slide. It is incredible that all six Laguna Beach teams placed at the regional competition and made it on state. That was just an amazing feat in and of itself. Once at state, there are thirty-six middle and secondary schools that make it on to the global level of competition from all over California. It is amazing that three of those come from our small school district. And I think that speaks to what I spoke about earlier, that the values of the school district and the values of of Destination Imagination are in sync and the values correspond with one another. We are so thankful to the school district for spirit, well, Mrs. Wu for spearheading it at Thurston. And and I just wanted to add one little thing. It's, it's not just the technological aspects of a solution. It's also the artistic and the creative and the storytelling aspects that really matter when they're judging these things. And I think that's what our schools have a strength in, is pulling that all together and showcasing it. Kevin will take it from there.
Okay, my name is Kevin Mulliken and I also am a proud parent of Destination Imagination student. I'm also a team manager of one of the teams. And we have spent the last seven months building a runway for these kids to fly and they have soared. It's amazing what they have put together in that very short period of time. I think anyone in this room would have a hard time getting up in front of a panel of judges who are judging you in a very short period of time over something you have spent months creating of your own accord. And that's what these kids have done. It's truly incredible what they, what they have put together. And I, I, I thank the school district and I thank Mrs. Solberg, Dr. Gloria for having the wisdom to support Destination Imagination in schools. You know, it's an opportunity that's available to every child in the district. They compete from elementary through middle and high school. And this year, as Tanya said, we had three teams go all the way or rather be invited to go all the way to the global competition. Now, it does involve an enormous investment in time and these kids have put that in. They have put in an extreme amount of time after school, building their sets, building their solutions, working with one another to solve these real world problems. We're really there to open the door for them. It's up to them to walk through the door. Not only is it a pretty substantial investment in time, getting to the global competition is a substantial financial investment for these kids as well. Each one of these teams, it will cost somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars for them to get to globals. It's in Knoxville, Tennessee. It's a week long event. They compete for that period of time. About a quarter of that is registration fees, about somewhere around five thousand dollars. The specific numbers are in the handout we gave, I think forty-seven seventy. Forty-seven fifty is the highest rate and it varies based on the size of the team and what you select to do and what your competition is. So that's sort of the highest number. So we're really seeking support from the community. We have a no-fundee site and CalVI supports a five-one-one-three donation place. And we understand that the school district has in the past supported academic opportunities for kids paying maybe registration fees in that, from that perspective. So that's really all we have to say. We're here because we're incredibly proud of what our kids have done and we really want to make sure they have the opportunity to go all the way to globals and really fulfill what they have done over these past eight months. And hopefully this board will take that into account as you meet this time and next time. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other further comments items not on the agenda? Again, moving to reports, Gloria, sit down.
Okay, so we have this week AP test preparation, so that's on Friday at seven thirty and we're going to go and fill out our forms that might take a while so that it saves some time for the actual day we have our tests. So that's been so much fun. So AP Euro, I think I mentioned this before, it has their, has their community service project and that, we'll start working on that after the AP test. So we'll have a lot of time because we finished content and pretty much finished the class. So we're going to do something involving assisting people in poverty. And so like I said, I'm doing the soft drive and I just did it up at Top of the World and that finished up. So I'm going to collect the class on Friday and then I'm doing it at our school, I think after our AP test. So it's a lot easier for people to help me out. And then since we do that, we get invited to WE Day, which is a day-long field trip to the forum in, is it LA? I'm not really sure of it, but it's really cool. I went last year and people perform and motivational speakers talk and it's a really motivational thing. It's amazing. And then we have the AP exams from May first to May twelve, different days. I know APers that end. And then CAS testing for juniors coming up and then the registration process is finishing at Thurston. And then Keep Hopkins is coming tomorrow from periods one, three and five. They, people pick so that they will avoid like classes that if they like have more difficulty because I'm skipping like first thirds, I picked a class that I can miss so we can hear him speak again. He's the guy who came a couple of months ago, I think, and talked. It was the whole presentation we had here. It was pretty inspirational for athletes too so that student athletes will also get to hear him personally and individually. And then Powerpuff is June sixth from, at six P M. And I know all the girls are really excited for that and trying to get what people can do. And then sports, because of the different spring breaks, the teams have been in all different tournaments. So it's been really hard to keep track of the schedule. Thank you.
Keep Hopkins tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I am here. We just recently got a report on membership and we have a hundred and sixty-four members. And I looked at that from the last year and it looks like we're up around twenty members, which I was a little bit surprised about that, but when I think about all that's happened, we've done quite a bit. You've been very busy, Lisa. And we are asking our members and since we have our second round conversations coming up, we're asking them to wear these Labouf t-shirts. And it's one of my favorite colors, the blue, just so you can see that. And just to show unity and support for our team of negotiators because they do spend a lot of time and energy to go to their, to go through this process as do the district also. You guys put in a lot of time and energy. And we look forward to, you know, always working hard to maintain our relationships and seek a mutually acceptable agreement as we've always done in the past, at least as long as I can remember. So anyways, and we also, not only are we unified just by wearing the t-shirt, but we are also unified by, you know, one of the things that our teachers do, like what we just saw. And and also if, you know, they, some teachers have had a hard time with different illnesses and health and family issues. So, but we all unify in those situations. So anyways, I just wanted to let you all know that if you see these sea of blue, that it is really a positive statement and in support. Okay, thank you.
I want to start by saying CCA has had two very positive negotiation meetings in the last two weeks. And we are starting to plan our end of the year meeting slash party, which will be June fourteenth. And I wanted to extend an invitation to all board members and the district administration. That is our, the last meeting where we also celebrate our classified employee of the year. And the high schools recently had their spring fundraiser, which was a all-staff fiesta Friday taco party luncheon. And it was enjoyed by several district administration and staff over here as well as high school staff for a five dollar donation. We got to enjoy a wonderful meal. And all of those proceeds went to our CCA scholarship fund. So thank you all very much. And we have a business meeting tomorrow that will go over summary class, but Lisa will be taken care of. I did that discussion this evening. And we're looking forward to spring break. So thank you very much.
The organization representatives here to report to us from School Power PTA.
Maybe you're out in the corner.
It's okay. Thank you.
I'll keep a brief. Hi there. Just to remind, there's no coffee break this month, so nothing to go to there. But we do have, the Angels tickets are online now. So at each of the sites, each of the PTA sites, you can go on there and purchase the tickets. And the actual date of the event is on June third at seven oh seven versus the Minnesota Twins. I think that's a Saturday. Is that right? Yeah, so fun. Easy. And the ticket prices now are twenty dollars or a little more than they have been in the past. But you get a nifty hat and it's very customized with the Laguna Beach logo and a wave, so worth the money. And about five dollars per ticket goes back to PTA and then raffle tickets, all the money goes back to PTA. So it's very nice, very generous of the Angels organization. And we do have beliefful slates across the board at each of our PTAs, so we're really happy about that. Stacy Johnson is a glutton for punishment. She will be the high school president again next year for PTA. And I'm saying that jokingly, of course, but James Azadian for Thurston, Celine McMillan for El Moro and Kelly Osborne for Top of the World. And I wanted a confirmation on CLCN. Didn't get that yet, so I'm not sure at that point, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Terry, you want to comment on that advocacy?
The pardon?
The advocacy report.
Well, I was kind of going to hold that till next month.
Okay.
I know. I thought I, I actually, yeah, I mean, just a little heads up. But yes, Jason has graciously asked if Kathleen might want to come and accept that for herself. But yeah, I know, because I had heard, of course, Kathleen Stiles had this great thank you to everybody involved in, you know, teachers in the district, et cetera. And I texted her and I'm, that can you, can you appear? So that'll be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for mentioning that.
There, anyone from School Power tonight? Okay, then we go to board members. And if you attended something as a member of the board, this is the time to report on that. And if it was perhaps something as a parent or a business partner, just then look at that in the later comments.
I do, that's something I said last night. I skipped because I have other things to talk about. Well, I actually, last Wednesday, I did attend the Salabat Empires and ask the CTE advisory board meeting, which was really, really interesting. Oh, God. Yeah, Amy was there. Right? Why am I thinking I'm having a little senior moment? How sad is that? Yes. I'm like, I want to say cradent. I'm sorry. That's, oh my God, I'm getting really old. Anyway, it was really, really interesting. It's the, it was for the Perkins, which is, they give us money for various ROP type projects. But if this was with industry representatives and the feedback that they were giving was, it was fascinating. I took two pages of notes, which I won't bore you with. But just listening to them and what they're looking for and what we're, how we're trying to, we really are trying to match with their needs. And it's, and and the opportunities that are available for our students who may either be going, they may be going to a four-year college or, you know, or two-year, or straight into the workforce. But these skills are needed across the board. They can pay for their way through college. They can pay for their way. They can, it was, it was just really interesting to listen to the, the, the industry leaders. And they were from, they were Blizzard. I'm trying to think, a bunch of, who was it?
NASCAR.
Yeah, NASCAR, yeah. No, the Hot Rock, Hot Rock Association. I mean, it was just, it was everybody you could, you could think of. And everybody kind of saying the same thing is that we need people, but we need people to do these jobs. And so what we need to do as a district or as a, as a CCA, college and career, is, is make sure that we have those, those opportunities for our students who may, who may want to take them because the, really, the opportunities are endless. So anyway, it was fascinating. Anyone was talking about it. I'm still jazzed about it. Then also went to TOW Ocean Awareness Night that Terrell Campbell, because I was going to say hype because that's who she always is to me, put on, it was Edoril and they raised three thousand dollars, I believe. For Pacific Marine, which was great. And again, the kids did, they had TED Talks and it was just really cute. Then the Boys and Girls Club went breakfast on Thursday morning and Savannah, the student of the year. She was, if she were my child, I would, I would be on cloud nine. And then, yeah. And then last night went to Grow Hop, Patty Ravens' class put that on. And again, just a lovely evening and opportunities from things, do I think some regard about some picklebeets, which were delicious. So, yes, they did. We had, Kaki and I had lunch today. And I don't even like bees. Yeah, so there were a lot of opportunities to have good things, but if anyone was talking about the Salabat, yeah, it was great.
I also went to the Boys and Girls Club breakfast and saw a lot of you there. I love the partnership that we have with Boys and Girls Club and all they do for us. I've known Savannah since the beginning and her voice, oh my gosh, just who she is. Fantastic. I also did the, I didn't make it to Terrell's, but I got to go to Patty's. And I love the way the kids were so engaged. I mean, all the Rocket Ready projects and we have to thank Mike for this, that not only is it a lot of work for teachers, but it's getting them all involved, but their students too, and they're learning so much. And then I got to go to a couple more. I went to Mrs. Wong's Rocket Ready, which is rooting for rhinos. And her students, it was, it was very cool. They had different setups and they were, students were experts on different endangered species and they knew a lot. They didn't, they didn't know everything, but they had great answers. One boy, he had the giraffes. They wore giraffe hats and they had a model of a giraffe. So I'm talking to about the giraffes. I said, now, how many different types of giraffes are there? And he said, well, I think there's three. And I said, well, which one is the most endangered? And he said, hmm, I think it's rotted straws. But he said, I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure. Perfect adult answer. And then they, I meant to wear it tonight. I made a little rhino bracelet. They had games there. One of the games was, they had it set up for first grade and second grade and then older. I got to do the older game with my husband. And you tried to find seven endangered species in some sand with chopsticks and you had twenty seconds. My husband found six, so I found one. But we had fun. And then across the way, they were doing, they were raising more money for the Pacific Marine Center, Marine Center. And I got to, haven't done it for a long time, but those guys. Got to make one of the old cootie catchers with different facts about marine animals there. And that was Shannon and Jacob Jameson and they had. And they had a marine mammal shirt, was that right? No, this was today during, during lunchtime. And again, I luckily got to go with Mr. Duddy and Jody and some other people and recognize Debbie Finnerty being nominated at the county level and all the EL staff for doing such a wonderful job with our EL students using really techniques and strategies that would count around CAFD. And she, she was very surprised. But what was wonderful was her class was so excited for her. And one of the boys said, this is the best day ever. And I thought, well, he probably has a lot of best day ever. But it was really sweet, the way they all cared, she was overwhelmed. And then the kids just went back to whatever they were doing, they were kind of done with it. Yeah, it was, we had wonderful people doing wonderful things, yeah, in her class. She got balloons and platters. And then my other thing, I will talk about later.
Okay. I think that you attended all a lot of the same things. I'm really appreciative that the teachers reached out and asked us to come to their rocket-ready presentation. And it was a lot of good projects. And the kids are very enthusiastic in those skits, they did skits last night, but they were, it was, I'm really thankful that you guys go because I think it's really important and that we, that we show that support. And the projects are great, for the teachers to do that. PTA Council, Anne Bergen was the presenter this time. And so she's really getting information out there on the CTE classes. And the more we can do that for parents, that they understand the opportunities. I think she can probably add some of that information that you brought.
She was there.
She was there to pass that on further for us. I think that parents need to realize the long-range value. But they, you can see from the questions that she's being asked out of that, they're not that familiar with the options. But she is, she knows it backwards and forwards. I mean, it doesn't, she doesn't need to check notes or anything else. So she's a real resource on that information. And I think that's it.
Again, several of the same events, of course, both for partner breakfast. One thing that I was able to attend was the Art Alliance Awards, the local awards. And congratulations to Cyrus Rich and Jennifer Baker and the band. And they won for Star Wars. Shikolun was there with me as well. And I believe he played Darth Vader, I believe. Uh, Mr. Duddy played Luke Skywalker. Uh, I believe Chris Hammerquist was Princess Leia.
That night, they did that.
No, no, this was last year. We were wanting to work last year, but very much, it was quite the, you know, instead of talking about all the different roles. It was, a lot of, a lot of people were involved in, they were, the community concert band, which is so thankful to have that partnership and a lot of work, I know, from Cyrus Rich and Jennifer Baker to kind of get it all together. And there's Jennifer's idea, she had, but she had been a part of it, she was younger. So when Star Wars first came out, she had said that when she was a student, that was one of the things her teacher had done. And it really had a lasting impact, so she replicated it with our students. So it was nice to be honored, it was a great event. It's just always impressive to see so many amazing artists and musicians and people within our own community. And it's cool that we actually have an event to honor them. So I also was able to attend yesterday the TMS Oral History Presentation Lunch. Always well done. It's my whole thanks to Sarah, she was running around clicking slides and getting kids up in the multitasker with a giant smile on her face. The feedback is always fantastic, just even, I think I saw a few people yesterday who were being, were in the audience, you know, welling up from tears, having these young students kind of talk about them. They always say, you know, I thought I knew a lot about my grandma or my grandpa, but, you know, I had no idea that they had to walk four miles to go here and that. And I think technology was one thing that stood out to them. They actually went outside and played. And they didn't have any toys to play with. But again, it's just an opportunity for our students to stand one in front of an amazing large crowd of adults. And a few of them are natural, I think there's a few comedians in that group as well, but just natural speakers, they were all fantastic. And I'm just so impressed with the work that our students are doing and that our staff are doing, and we're grateful for that. So I appreciate that opportunity and thank our staff for continuing that project. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I wish I had, I want to thank Slavufa and CCA have been very positive negotiations sessions. And this is Winston, who is one of the most well-prepared professional women that I've ever worked around. So it's been very fun and easy for me so far. We're also in the thick of budget development and working very hard on that end to get our sites budgeted. And thank you to the principals, they've been very cooperative and helpful developing our, our budgets. And we're doing a little bit of different process this year, so that I'm more involved. But their help is definitely great. Can't leave out our amazing staff accountant, Raymond Lee, who's been balancing negotiations and budget development and has done a fantastic job, always reliable, and I just want to give him a little shout out.
And the honors, I just left last week.
Yes, and the honors.
Oh, your honors as well, so.
Miss Vaughn?
So again, just to reiterate, negotiations have been going well. I really appreciate our collaborative relationships with our associations. Our discussions are not always easy and the problems that we need to solve are not as well. But we are focused on the common goal of the good of our students and also want to acknowledge all of the hard work that goes into that. Our principals who are, you know, in a district this small, we have to tap on them to be part of a lot of things. And this is a very important piece of that, as well as our teachers and our classified staff. I don't know how the offices of the schools run without Chris and Dorinda on those days when we're together. But somehow, again, speaks to the unity of the staff coming together to cover for each other and work together.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to Thurston because they're continuing to meet with Jen McLuhan around NGSS and continue their pathway work. Thank you also to School Power, their teacher grants have closed. And so that process is under review, we're so grateful for their partnership. Because of your support, Julia and I, Julia and I are going to get back and we're working on depth and complexity imprisonment again with our teachers. We've been busy meeting with our ELA, ELD committees to get all of their recommendations. And we're going to get all that compiled for you and ready for you. And finally, congratulations to Mrs. Finnerty and a big thank you to Mr. Duddy for his support with acknowledging her excellence.
And now we move to our consent calendar. Are there any consent items that we're going to like pull? I asked for a motion, please, for items A through K. And anyone have any questions on any items that we could? All in favor of the consent calendar? I oppose. Carrie's live vote. Sorry, that's right. It's a now. This is going to be a cabinet call. We now move to our information items. Our first item is a third quarter report of uniform compliance with the Williams case of like we discussed. Routine item, our third quarter report, we have no complaints. Thank you. Thanks to everyone who took consent calendar, we are meeting all of those new. Our next information item is our monthly financial report with the nourishment seventeen.
Thanks, President Fickers. This doesn't, it's not going to look any different than the second interim. We're tracking almost exactly as it's taught. You can see the revenues are coming to date about fifty-six percent. We're going to get our second largest installment property tax here next week for the following months. And then expenditures as of the beginning of February are about sixty percent of what we projected. And that again is on that. So you can see the special programs that have been highlighted below. A lot of, anytime it's over the fifty, sixty percent, a lot of times I see the equipment purchases because those are made earlier in the year. And then these services are ongoing, so it'll be closer to about fifty, sixty percent. We would expect the end of February. One area that I will highlight is on the OPEP. It is on page, uh. So it's towards the end. It is, sorry, twenty-one?
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
Seventy-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-eight. We, it has gone down in value, so it is a paper loss, but it's not a real loss. But just to highlight that. And we are going to get our third quarter results, which will likely be higher. So with that, do you have any questions?
I just, I feel I have to say every time I'm so appreciative of all the transgenders doing so. Tier of art and so identified and that makes sense, just really.
Thank you. Our next information item is our update on NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards Progression Activities.
Yes, I'd like to invite Jesse Rothlin up to the podium. And to acknowledge the work of Thurston Middle School under the leadership of Jennifer. We're so grateful that they're present, their process this evening.
Excellent. Good evening and thank you for having me. Jesse Rothlin, science teacher and TOSA at Thurston Middle School. Just really happy to be here to give you a quick update on our exploration of the Next Generation Science Standards, Preferred Integrated Model. When we started this exploration, what we asked ourselves? All right, well.
You guys pointed at me.
Pointed at you?
Yeah.
You know, we had it on paper, right?
It was on paper, so.
Yeah.
Probably wrong.
Oh, there we are. Okay.
Things only get better.
So what we asked ourselves when we started this is, what is best for our students? And we came up with a little list of a few items that we thought was best, well, were going to be best for our students. First, we wanted our students to have a deeper understanding of science, not just a base fact understanding of science, which we've been getting for the last few years. We wanted students to start diving into science, being explorers of science, not just passively learning facts. We wanted students to become educators, educated consumers of science facts, not just listening and hearing whatever they say and taking it as fact. And most importantly, we wanted our students to be college and career ready. So during our exploration, what we've gone to is Sandy, Sandy Guido Union High School District. And we had the pleasure of meeting with Jim Nicole and the TOSA there, who's extremely brilliant. And we had the opportunity to talk to teachers and listen to their pros and cons and their success stories and their challenges with their integrated model. And the best thing is that we saw when we walked into the classrooms is the students who were working in the integrated model were fully engaged. They were getting all sections of science, not just earth science, not just physical science, not just chemistry. They were getting everything in one classroom. And so it was connecting to them and they were able to have that ownership, which was great. The next thing we did is we actually went to Torrance. And we sat in on a half-day professional development training for the sixth grade students and, teachers. And what we saw there is the teachers, we had that opportunity to have the teachers explain to us what their successes and what their challenges were. And we heard nothing but successes. Kids learning, kids were having fun, kids were having a deep understanding and they were getting excited about science. The kids were saying, hey, you know what, I might want to do this as a career. And that was really exciting for us to hear. And we had this huge aha moment when we were sitting down with Jen from Sandy Guido. We saw what we were doing, we're doing the coordinated science, but in each grade level. So with NGSS, we can do coordinated science, but we're still only putting science in one island. We're learning on an island, and that's not what science is. Science is learning everything at one time. You can't teach biology, you can't teach cellular processes and not know anything about physical science or earth science because it all's integrated. And that's what we were kind of noticing. And we had this huge aha moment as a team and we said, wow, this is amazing stuff. We need to start looking at this deeper. So the next thing we did is we went and we looked at our index case in NGSS standards. And we saw, once again, hey, what's great for our students, what is best for our students? And we saw, hey, all students, all standards. Automatically are just burnt up and we said, that's great, that's what we want. Performance expectations, once again, not just facts. Kids are expected now to have performance, they're expected to show us that they have this deep meaning of science and which is just unbelievable. The next thing, engineering practices, something that's been lacking in our science curriculum for years. And this is great because we're looking at twenty-five percent of our next, our jobs in the future are going to be in the STEM field. And we want to prepare our kids for that and get them ready for college. We also noticed that the cost-cutting concepts are helping us with our Common Core standards and the adoption, the new adoptions in math. So we got really, really excited. And as you can see here, we have Ms. Holinsky and Ms. Wu working on a science experiment that is no longer just cookie cutter, it's the students having to explore and having to learn and get interested on their. Career and college ready. What would I have been noticing is as I walk around and talk to different schools in different industry is that some of our teachers, I'm sorry, some of our kids are not ready for this. And what we saw with our Next Generation Science Standards is a yearly progression model. Kids are learning from year to year and they're building on top of what they've already learned. They have the Common Core literacy math skills that are integrated already into the curriculum. And they're creating these skills for college, they're getting ready for STEM careers and they're becoming critical thinkers, which was really exciting. And as for the career readiness, we walk around and we've seen as our STEM ecosystem that this is what employers are wanting, this is what they're looking for, is people who can think critically, analyze information and who can solve complex problems and be able to talk to each other. A lot of engineers are saying, hey, we have this problem where we can't have these kids working together. They're not working together, they can't solve problems. They're in their own little bubble because they learned this specific science fact. They learned that they are only a chemical engineer and there's no other opposite side to it. So this is something that we've noticed is great for our students. Once again, twenty-five percent of our next jobs, the jobs in the future are going to be STEM related. That includes nursing, that includes chemical, biological engineers. And we want to get our kids excited about this with our hands-on activities. We want them to be able to think like scientists and we want them to start considering these careers, especially females in sixth grade, start looking at it, hey, I can do this too. This is something that men and women can do. What is the Next Generation Science Standards? It's a lot less just lab, it's a lot more lab. It's students looking at phenomenon, not getting a lecture, looking at real-world events and being able to explain them in rational ways. Using science to solve real-world problems that are very complicated. And that's what we're really excited about. And this TMS team is really excited about this. And we're really looking forward to giving you guys a next update on our process in the NGSS adoption. Thank you very much.
Because I've been hanging out with you a lot.
Yes.
I, I'm so pleased that you've opted for the integrated model. I just, I, I can't thank you enough for taking that brave step. Because it is exactly what you said, it, it, it just makes sense. And it, it allows the kids to think much more deeply and connect, you know, to various parts. And I looked at that because I sat with the eyeball, you know, when we did the, the light and the glossy color at the last one. And yeah, it was, it was biology, it was physics, it was chemistry, it was everything. And it was, and that, that was perfect, that was one lesson, you know, and so obvious. And then through the last point you made, which is what industry is looking for, you know, the inability to talk to each other. Or that's exactly the thing that I went to on Wednesday, what they were talking about, the soft skills. How you, the interpersonal skills, how do they deal? And so many of them lack that because they're so siloed. And I'm only, I'm only this kind of a person, I don't have that ability. And so this gets, from the beginning, gets them into that, into that mode. And I just, I just, thank you. I just, I'm so, so excited about this for our kids.
It's a very exciting time, and we're really looking forward to it.
And thank you for taking the leak, I know you've got a And I think you could take the leaks, I know you've got a baby and you probably have a baby.
Absolutely.
And Jesse, I think having science specialists at the elementary school feeding into Thurston is going to even grow your program more. Kids are gonna come up with more law knowledge to start with and excitement.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, and, and seeing those connections from year to year, the kids are, are gonna get, they're already excited about it. And that, that's one of the great things about the Fair and Great Model, isn't it?
So you're integrating engineering into sixth grade, like, science classes, like?
Yes, ma'am. So it's chemistry, life science, earth science, all engineering and Common Core literacy standards, all one-to-one classroom.
Yeah, I wish I had that because my little brother is a fifth grader and he heard about that. Because like I know little kids are like doing a lot of little stuff, not engineering, but they're doing like block works and like making little things to pick up. Because I was in the show and the Cinderella play and little kids were in the thing with us. And this little kid named Dorian, I think he's fourth grader, he told us about how they made like some little car to pick up trash and stuff and put it into the trash bin. And so I think that's really cool because it opens up a lot of different opportunities. Because at the high school, engineering is more of an elective rather than into science courses.
Yes.
And I think so many people would benefit from that and I think that's really cool.
I agree, and you know, shameless thought to tell them to take this in class when you tell them six years.
Jesse, I'm listening to you, I'm thinking, um, say a student now takes, you know, the science, what do you call it, separate one.
Uh, coordinated science.
Coordinated science, okay, so they, so students in the class either sixth, seventh, eighth grade and that and they don't particularly take to that particular subject. When it's integrated then, well, that, that seems to increase the opportunities for them to find a part of science that they are excited about.
Absolutely.
And then maybe the part that doesn't, that they'll really get will be in, in there, but it won't be like they have a whole year of kind of suffering through something that.
It gives them the exposure, that's, that's great. It exposes more concepts instead of just that one particular concept. Because what we've noticed is kids in sixth grade, that's where we gotta get them. Uh, we gotta get them hooked on science in sixth grade. And if once, if we don't do that, seventh grade, they're gonna become less and less interested as they go further on.
Well, Jen was actually making that point, she's a cool one, who is brilliant, he's absolutely right, she's brilliant. And but she was making that point that if you, you know, you don't buy, by siloing it and you don't like it, then you hate it.
Yes.
And so by, by bringing the other parts in, if you like biology, but really think physics is stupid, then you see how it, they meld, it, it becomes, it, it just becomes all of a part and.
Yeah.
And when they're working on, sort of, when they're working on a team too, they can, right, they can pick the part that speaks to them loud or.
Right, and, and, or challenge themselves, or at least they have something they really like.
Well, that communication part, that, that impacts a lot, a lot of business world out there. Because they probably, with kids coming out of college, they can't communicate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also difficult because in the sixth grade, I, we did environmental still, I think that's the same thing still. And we learned similar things that we learned all throughout elementary school. It was like sedimentary rocks, in-muse rocks, and then climate change and things that we've already learned. And so right off the bat, some kids were a little bit bored of the science. But then like you get Ms. Lindsay the next year and then you're like, oh my gosh, it's so cool. But, I mean, that's just me because I'm a hunter, but like, um, some kids were just kind of like done in sixth grades, I mean, yeah, but.
And that's what we wanna try to do, we wanted to get them just extremely stuck in science.
I think, I think in the young grades they probably are and then somewhere along there they lose it.
About sixth grade.
Something they don't, they can't do it or something they can't, or against it.
Not any longer, not any longer.
Yeah, no, I don't think so. And I, and I did, it's wonderful to hear the kids talk about, um, in general, at the middle school and all the critical thinking they're asked to participate in. And, and their personal experiences of that, in whatever that class is, the subject is, of when they tend to like it more or when it's so challenging for them. But they still like the fact that someone must think, it's, it's the neat take of. Right, of, of, not just science, but in the science they're talking about.
Yeah, more collaboration, like I said, always say, less blood, more lab.
Thanks, Jesse, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if I could just hop in, next steps for this is Jesse will represent Thurston at Kirkville Council on Thursday along with a plethora of other options that, that we're talking about through Kirkville Council. And, um, will receive advisement from that committee. So we're looking forward to bring this back to you for your consideration on May night, no, June, May, but May night for course approval.
Is there any public comment on this item? Now we got action items. Tonight, our first action item is approval of single plans for student achievement. Seems like it should be bigger.
Yes, you're right, this is, this is important. This, this work drives our schools and the goals line our schools. As some information for you, our school site councils have been meeting throughout the year to focus on data and relying goals. The goals are around the eight action identified state priorities in LCAP. And this has been under the leadership of our principals, so we're so fortunate that they let it. The principals with their school site councils, in addition to other stakeholders, were in the room with the LCAP advisory committee on March seventeenth, where we continue to work and refine those goals. And so we bring forth these plans for review.
Questions?
The only question I have is the numbers of the people don't necessarily add up.
Yeah, we noticed that for some reason that we use a template through DTR.
Yeah, that was relevant.
It doesn't do the addition, the right way.
Yeah, well, that's hard, that's actually too, I mean, wow, yeah.
Yes. Well, yeah, it's a matter of fix something.
Yeah, that was, but otherwise it was, I, and I really appreciate it, I mean, I'm sure you probably have to do it, but the inclusion of the test scores, which I know are the all and all, but I do like the ability to follow, you know, the cohort and really see how that, see how that works. And, and so that was, I appreciate being able to look at that and, yeah, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Thank you, guys.
Uh, I need to take public comment on this item before we ask our questions, sorry.
Sorry, my bad.
No, it was my bad, I'm still disoriented on that. Does we have any? Okay, and then we need emotions. And now we can discuss this, sorry. No, that's, questions can be more emotional discussion. Because those are just clarify questions, which is what we asked. So I, I do think that it informs us when we see this data on how our teachers can use the data to see, you know, where, okay, they're gonna look at this and say, alright, what happened here? And if we look at this, this level, this grade, in this part of the testing to see, to ask the questions. Why, you know, why did our numbers go substantially up or why did they go up a few? And so it's, I think it's good for us to see how that data can be pulled out and useful rather than just spreadsheets of data. So I was glad to see that, but I think it reflects a lot, to me, it reflects a lot, a lot of work. And it also tells us all the things that we are doing at our school sites to accomplish these goals. So it's, they're measurable, that's what, I think that's the difference in.
It's lovely city school on top of the hill that gets to look, nestled, nestled in.
That's my favorite word, yeah.
Taking that out, it's not just in like.
Yeah, it's like, darn it, you know.
But it's, it does, it does have that, like, that is key.
And comprehensive, so comprehensive, that's true.
And asking, asking ourselves a lot of good questions, like, why is the student data a little off when the teachers think it's happening?
Right, so one of the things that we did do, and will continue to do with the principals in particular, in the more recent data dive, where we've kind of talked about, so what are we seeing and how would we walk through our teachers through this conversation, how would we walk through our parents through a similar conversation? And as we continue in the LCAP season, for lack of a better term, in, in these other teaching. But we, we do have a lot of data and what we wanna be thoughtful is, and always with data, you don't wanna be data-rich information hoarder. And so being very thoughtful about what does this mean, how can we be sure that by making this change that it causes this to go up permanently? Being very outcome driven is, is really what we're, we're looking at. And I appreciate the principals' work on, on that and this is, will continue to evolve over time. These plans are never intended to accomplish all the things that we're doing at our school sites, but kind of one of, we're an area where we may be focusing, or several areas we may be focusing. We know there's a lot more going on in our school sites that aren't put into, into these plans. So I appreciate the teachers' times, the, the teachers who spread time on these committees, I know the principals do as well, our parents, and I know there's a couple students at the high school as well, that's, that's kind of looking at this. And it's not always the most fun conversation times to look at data and, and some people's eyes wave that we're gonna start throwing numbers at them. But that's why we did the data dive, we agreed to say, okay, so how would we make this more pursuable, I guess, for the general public, so.
Which group was that that was in the data, because I think these were great.
So that was, we started with the principals, they're gonna pull that out to their, again, their school site council group or advisory committees and potentially their PTAs. And they have their teacher groups, teacher leaders, whether it's their department chairs at the high school or whether it's the grade level teams. So they're gonna be doing some more of that in the next, next month, so.
I think we're referencing this call to literature comment. And I really found this informative and I, what I am kind of taking up with Patty's comment about the school miss nestled, that sometimes reports like this, like everybody's the same. And these were not the same, these were really specific to the survey information that they got for that site. And it's, and as you said, I think it's probably similar in that if we think we're doing one thing as parents and we ask our kids, they're gonna go, no, 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 that's not it. So it'd be the same and it's good for teachers to know that, that, you know, it's, the student's perception is their reality. And that will help us then to, you know, to make sure that teachers, I think one thing that stood out was to be aware of students that need a little connection. Then of course, how to do that within the timeframe of teaching, it's hard. But I really like giving this, thank you. Any other discussion? Do you have emotion or in favor? I, opposed. There's four open.
Good job.
Our next action item is, okay, very cool. Maybe, but it's the revised job descriptions and reclassifications of the CSA positions.
So this is, was a result of our final reclassification committee meeting for sixteen, seventeen school year. And fairly minor changes, even though there's a lot of job descriptions listed here. We made a couple of updates to job descriptions listed in A through B, which includes the development and updating of a routine or schedule. It just enables substitutes to come in and be able to pick up where the, the instructional assistant left off and, and hopefully make that transition a little more seamless. In addition to that, we reclassified, we have some employable two positions. They're an instructional assistant and a playground supervisor. And we've run into some issues with that, having two different, two separate positions. And if you need someone to do more playground supervision than they're working on in class. So one of the solutions, and this is where I really appreciate the, the committee's willingness to tell them, solve and work together, was to reclassify the playground supervisor positions into the regular positions of those employees. So you will find that all of these job descriptions now include supervision as one of the required duties, which are, allows for maximum flexibility for our administrators to be able to cover with supervision when it's needed. And it's cleaner having employees not have two positions, so you can be a little more flexible. So those are really the only changes that we're recommending to bring forward.
Public comment on these revised descriptions? Or questions? Do you have a motion?
I, I just can't, and maybe this is sort of a bit picky, I, I like the idea of it being a bribe. But I was noticing like under the physical requirements for the instructional assistant assistants that they need to be able to occasionally lift or pull up to seventy-five pounds. But then, and I know it's not in this part, but it, it has to do with this. Then for the revised job description for the director of facilities, they only need to be able to lift fifty pounds. And I wondered, there's probably some, I mean, that probably has to do with something in that.
There is an, an analysis that we do.
Okay.
As, you know, this wasn't the particular area we were looking at in this.
Correct.
supervision, but it's a move up to seventy-five pounds with assistance.
Correct.
So that is in, like, in an emergency situation where you need to carry a child or, um, you know, that's going to be more of an occasional situation, not something that's common. Director of facilities were not, it's not part of their essential duties to do really any lifting. They.
Fifty pounds without assistance.
Right, without assistance.
Without assistance. An occasion, occasion, okay. So we're not saying that the classroom aide has to be able to lift a lot of weight.
Oh, absolutely not, no, it's definitely not lift over ten, remember, there's a difference between lifting over a tray.
Yeah, I thought you were going for some muscle.
Right. No, 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 no. No, we, and we believe all of our employees, currently employees, we need physical requirements. And we have mechanisms for dealing with that if they can't, we have our accommodations process.
For that, seventy-five pounds or more.
And what it, and, I mean, the, the idea of looking at the student, but also you could use a dollar. I mean, we could move something that's.
That's assistance.
That's a set of assistance.
So you, you, it's not just to pick it simply trying, dragging, again, dragging a student out of your, uh, dangerous situation that may happen or, uh, I think, uh.
I know one of those situations, there's something actually had a heavy student that wasn't in a wheelchair but should have been. And getting the student on and off the bus. I mean, several of us hurt our backs and quiet, I think, but it was, it was very difficult. And I don't know how there's a lift for that now.
Yes.
How do you do that now?
Yeah, there's, there's equipment, usually if there's, that would be part of the student's plan or how they do it.
The student didn't have a plan.
Doesn't have a life gift.
Well, it's, yeah, seven years ago. They ended up like on field trips, they would hire a, a professional wrestler guy to come lift. Because we couldn't follow the state. But I just, I just think about it, people's backs being, being served.
Absolutely, they're trying to.
No, we, we don't want that to be the case, certainly if an employee doesn't feel safe or comfortable doing the lifting, they should let their administrator or supervisor know so that we can come up with an alternative plan.
Okay, absolutely.
Do you have a motion?
So.
Second. Any more discussion?
Yes, because I was saying, I thought this was after the motion supply, was that?
Kind of dropped my detail.
That's what I was saying, so would, would everyone that works for us now can comply to this change, so we're gonna change the agent.
Correct.
We just took out that one thing on behavioral functions that was, I couldn't have really told you what it, what that's due for. We have a couple of other, okay, that was, um, assistant for disability patient and the assistant. It's the deadline, the, the line.
Yes, so the reason that's taken out is because it's redundant, there's another statement above, I believe, that has the same information. Yeah, there's, the fourth bullet down is.
The fourth bullet, I'm assuming it was.
Yes. It, it was redundant, that's why it's removed.
Very creative, critical thinking, collaborative thinking, you took them up with, which seems like could have been a simple solution, but I know, right, it wasn't, wasn't staring at anything, so what a great job of all looking together and coming up with a nice job.
As far as those relationships.
All in favor? I, opposed. Next item is a revised job description, director of facilities.
Hey, so now that we have a vacancy, an official vacancy in director of facilities, um, yeah, it's been a while. We have, with Jeff's input, revised this job description to bring it up to date. You'll see some additions of things like integration of technology in the classroom and office spaces, which is an important part of this job description now. Um, and then we've made a couple of other updates based on, um, things like transportation, that position wasn't involved in transportation, moved that around, so.
Change the water council?
Public comment on this item? What's questions? Motion, I think, so, in a second. Any discussion? Thank you, Lisa. All in favor? I, opposed. Next action item is resolution number seventeen oh seven, we're going to reach the vice board to adopt the conflict of interest code, supersede all other conflict of interest codes and amend previously adopted.
So, uh, several years ago, the board updated its conflict of interest code related to those who require to file a conflict of interest with the county. And it was, we added coordinator to that, and now we no longer have the job description, and it was timely with three new board members who have been actually. Part of this conversation to have the three new members, and the current two sitting members to adopt this conflict of interest code, which is, again, same language as it was before. As you can see, the strikeout was separated with the coordinator position, so.
Public comment? Any questions? Thank motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? It is clear, it has my step little paragraph that says exactly what this under, was a cue. O C, no, O C oh one, and that says real clear, and it's very short for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is four oh one. Our next item is approval of amendment number four to extend the May first twenty thirteen agreement for transportation services to American logistics company to transport special needs students for routes out of the district from May twenty seventeen to April third of twenty eighteen, not exceed three hundred fifty thousand. That's checking.
So this is the fourth amendment, meaning that we renewed this now, this will be our fourth time, then not to exceed, and that's included in here, it's the exact same as before, it's last year, two hundred fifty thousand. And it's valid beginning of May through the end of April two thousand.
Public comment? Any board questions on this item? Motion, please? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is four oh one. And our last section is one member request items for community request for information or general comments.
So I have commented, I think, before announcing this, it's a bit of a town. Great, because I was like, I don't know, I need. But I just wanted to, I wanted to thank our administrative staff, from all levels, for really being so responsive. And it's not issues as my parent had, like, I'm calling, I'm calling, I'm, yeah, if someone's asking, and, and I, particularly, I don't think Mr. Philander gets as many. Who knows, as he, he unfortunately gets to make those really tough calls, and he, three different instances, and he was just amazing at, you know, where it goes, and it kind of counseling me of how that works, or trying to help me, or just to go see him or somewhere, or break, and it was wonderful. And then the responses from everyone responding to that, but just in general, and that shows you so much, I mean, tirelessly, and, and it's, and it really is. And then, what are you guys ready to function after hours or during the day, it's, it's really, it's very. And, and, you know, assistants. He does a lot of, and so, I didn't really think that was, like, boring.
But you're, but, but, this is where it goes.
This is, yeah, but I wanted to make sure.
And our principals can think of that when they look at their emails.
Well, what?
As email, email and texting has changed the landscape.
And, and I guess on that side note, that also the, the phone call makes such a difference, and there are all of us rather do this, and, and finding that connection, the time to talk to someone is much harder than responding back, but boy, it just changes the tone and the support. And I, and then I think it's all the kids felt supported, even, I remember what that comes for, right?
I appreciate the destination imagination folks coming. Big, big thank you to I'm, William Bjorn, I'm, I, it's very, I was still doing it at T W, I don't know if somebody does it at, um.
Her, her base there.
And, oh, wow. And, yeah, and then, does anybody do it over? Just, I know it's a ton of work, and, but they deserve a lot of credit for what those kids have accomplished, because they're sitting there with them, and.
Ida has to be delighted.
Oh, she's kind of, she is, she's thrilled.
She loved it the first year.
Right.
So thankfully this is so expensive this time, because it's the first time, or you didn't ask.
Yes, this is. This is huge, yeah, but, but it's just, but I just, I, anyway, I, but I did want to shout out to the, to the teachers or advisors, or whatever they're called, you know, for that. Also, I'm going to extend an invitation to everyone for honors convocation at the high school, and president of scholarship foundation this year. On June ninth, we have dinner at five o'clock, I cater, and the awards are at seven, if anybody would like to attend. It's, it's, it's a long evening, it's seven to eleven, so, but you don't have to stay the whole time, but it is a lovely event, and Mr. Hertz will be there. But anybody else that would like to come, it's a lovely time for people to thank people from the community, because it is, it is almost four hundred thousand dollars that's, that's given out that night. Our, our, our purpose, our unions give out their, their scholarships, and it, it's just a lovely, so that's, that's.
A lot of ways.
It's, but it's great, do not, yeah, and you can come and go, as you please, but I'm, I'm excited, I have an invitation to you. And then I would like to also thank Sarah Schaefer for continuing oral history. It is a tradition that is so, so rich, I said this to you before. One of my neighbors was cleaning out her mom's house, and she found a, one, a report she'd done, guy loves help, she's thirty-two now. And she said, oh my gosh, you know, is Ida still alive? I said, yeah, she's down the street. She took her sixth grade oral history report down the street to Ida Cohen. And, I mean, you know, it's just, it's those kinds of things, and it is, it just, I know times move on, and we have all this wonderful technology, and I love, you know, as we, but there are things that we need to honor. And that is one of the things I'm so glad that we still do, so that is just my two cents.
And that's something kids remember.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's important to the people that they kick also.
Yeah, because it's, and that is the, the reality of that, you know, the year that, I think the year that Rob Field did it, but my husband was so impressed with that, that he, he took that up and did the whole thing with his mom. Because that, if they, if you don't do that, that's lost.
Yeah.
And you think, you know, the middle of those things about maybe their childhood, it just never happened to ask, because, you know, you don't ask your parents things like that. So it's really, it really is confidence thing.
It is, and I've been thinking, kind of, to Sarah, because my kids took it up and interviewed my dad under the library conference, where they did the recording company, he, he missed that part. So he thought that part, but, because he worked for that, so they really wanted, they had a lot of questions, but, but they did it off of Sarah's example, or, that's really.
It's great. And I don't know if this is where this comes, but they'll let me know.
It would be anywhere else.
I met with Crystal Cove Alliance, and there's.
Florida.
Yeah, and of course, they're celebrating that Coastal Fund, they approved them to get the other cottages, which is all wonderful, and they're in the midst of fundraising now. They think they need thirty-three million, Coastal gave them five million, but that's not one time now. They, as part of redoing the cottages, and maybe you guys all know this, but they're doing two cottages that will be like dormitories for science study. And they're partnering with UCI, and they are starting out studying water raft.
Yeah, mine.
Oh, I read it, they might know, I know about us.
Well, they were all, I was lucky enough to be at this event, because I was on their art council. So they were talking about all their future plans, and hopefully, because of, El Moro's always had a relationship with Crystal Cove, but now it's expanded a lot because of Dustin. And if we keep expanding that and keep that going, there are a lot of wonderful things that they have on their plate coming up, they've really added to their number of people that teach science there.
I was already having to work at the Methodist priest school, and that was a regular. But you're kidding. She would roar, she lived there, you know, at the, at the, at their cottage, she lived at the cottage, and she would.
Oh my god, she's still so gone home.
Roaring in her little Volkswagen bug, yeah.
Wow.
Who would have thought? And that made you think of one of my things, which is after going to Terrell's event, I started, and I know there are more than this, but I'm sure you guys have read the article about John Rose, who went to school here, and then has continued to work with the water projects, that he, he just happened to be someplace as a professional surfer, and so he got started doing that. He just got taken with what it means to not have the water, and he's, he needed to do that. James Prigum, who's graduated from here, and does his E P award, and then Chad Nelson, who's now a hip surferider in the local branch. Jerry Dawsonson, and Howard Jones, who've been involved with the local conservancy, so, the county conservancy. And so I think that just, you know, we have students who live here who are making a mark in the world in environmental aspects, and I think it, I think we'll see more of that, because we're starting younger with that, with the awareness. The students were so excited in that ocean awareness, like, to see, and to, to have it ingrained in them, you know, that gun, it's just remarkable to me, and very worthwhile.
Also, their mentorship, you know, those students that were here before, and we talked about how important it is to see people that are coming and doing.
Exactly, well, they're mostly, that's, it's mostly volunteer efforts, I mean, they're not, it's not, they're doing in addition to whatever else they're doing. I just noted that it's bus driver in custodian recognition week, and I wanted to, I think it's, those are key positions for the interaction with our students, they're, it's very important. I mean, for some students in elementary school, they love that custodian, I mean, that's just a very strong connection for them. And the bus driver, of course, is, if, if, and if they drive the buses at junior school, they, they need an extra week. Some of our bus drivers take the walk out in the acres and walk around the park looped, and we saw them the other day, and actually, the one girl was taking them a second time. I was like, gotta get ready for the afternoon. But I, that is key, and I'm glad that we recognize that. I picked these up, actually, my husband kept asking me last week if I brought them in yet, I haven't, but he won seats, so. But these are kids, this is tenth grade at the high school, they did the artwork for these, this is another fourth grade at the high school. This is at the high school, and this is at seventh grade. And these are at the water district, so they had these, we pick, always pick these up, but this year, they had this nice artwork from our students, and I don't know who was responsible for having the students get involved in this, but great, great thing. And.
Possibilities for rejection.
I wanted to follow up again, I think that it's the training that we provide for our staff on CPR and having the fibrillators. And I know it's, it took a long time, it took actually a year to get the fibrillators in this district, there was opposition to it, if that's, if you can comprehend that at this point in time. But I think that it's, and I know that I, that I had emailed Jose Luis the next day, and he said he just even wanted more training. I mean, really realizing how important that was, so I'm really glad that we are doing that in this district, and that we have enabled our staff to have, to have the capability to respond. Then I, I didn't think Lance was here and he left, but I wanted, I, I know that we are doing this, our due process, and I said that there's some resistance from the Irvine schools, and I just wanted to encourage him if he can get us into a more competitive league, I, I fully want to support that, and, and hope that he will, that he will do whatever it can to take care of that. And tied in with that, in some of our earlier discussions, that baseball and softball wanted to move, to start earlier, and that lost by one vote. But they went because they are having their competitions, doesn't affect us because our school gets out late, but districts where they get out earlier, they're still going on in, in the playoffs and things after, after, after graduation. So they have seniors on the team, and, I mean, but it was, didn't make it, they want to start a few weeks earlier for their season. So those, if you, if that comment doesn't seem to make any sense to us, because in my head, the connection is that, that it's hard to make changes. It's hard to make changes in, in, to CIF, it's hard to make changes in anything when you're used to doing it one way for a lot of years, but that we need to be progressing. Flexible, yes. Thank you, I know, I made a lot of notes on, oh, one more, I started here. Should we have identification as we're going through when we go on campus? We've, I mean, seasonlessly well.
Actually, that's pretty, since board member on it, because we're managing, we have.
Can we do a lot more?
I just. It's, it's basically, just to be like, an example, I mean, to say that we don't have to do it, it's not like.
Of course we should do it.
And, and, are, do we need to do, are we rolling out the rapid program already, or have we started? No.
No, we're, we're identifying locations, you know, we have, working with our IT folks, so in terms of where you want to put it, we also want to try and make sure we get, get it working appropriately at one school site. And go to the next step through it, and, and learn it that way, so that's our intention is.
And so you'll give this any, this one any feedback?
Correct, we wanted to start in a thoughtful process, instead of trying it and not having anything go haywire, that we have haywire it for, instead of, so. Just being, being a little thoughtful in that.
Wonder why? Because I was there. Okay, thank you for indulging all of us. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May ninth, in the boardroom, and I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?